Okay, we'll go ahead and bring the city council meeting in order. I'd like to first ask everyone to stand and join in reciting the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kevin, can you please do your roll call?
Jamie Bowers.
Yes.
Madam.
Here.
Tyler Hornkamp.
Yes.
Scott.
All right.
Yeah.
Happy Halloween.
Here.
Okay, was everyone given a chance to review the minutes from the last meeting held on May 7th?
Make a motion, accept them as emailed.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
All, same side. Okay, uh, first we have, um, the chamber, Decatur Chamber is asking for, um, us to help with the fireworks. Um, I don't think the last few years the city has, um, paid anything for the fireworks, and they're asking if we can help. Um, there've been really good shows in the last two years, I think everyone can attest to that, that's been around. Um, they have new people in charge, and they're, it shows the biggest it's ever been, so, um...
I heard the, the total price was...
Oh, I think it was like twenty-two thousand last year, something like that.
What are, uh, normal donations, like, if they get donations from companies, or what does that, what does that dollar amount look like?
Uh, I think last year the, the guy shooting off the fireworks did most of the fundraising.
No, no.
Or did Craig do most of the fundraising?
No, Chamber did, yeah.
They ran short, they had a budget, ran short, and then I think the Chamber came up with...
They had to come up with money at the end, yeah. I think they were a few thousand short at the end of the year, and at the end they had to get it real quick, so...
Do we know why they're not getting the donations that they need? Any insight on that?
I don't know, I think it's just 'cause it's, it's so much more expensive nowadays, and then I know, um, they have a pretty special lineup of concerts this year that are, um, a lot of tribute bands, so, um, I think they just keep going back to the same sponsors all the time, so...
I would make a recommendation that we give twenty-five hundred dollars to the display. A lot of people assume it's a Decatur fireworks display, when in fact it is a Chamber event.
Yeah.
One year there was talk of not having fireworks, and, uh, that lit up real quick in the, in the city, and, uh, it does bring a lot of people to town, it brings commerce, it's, um, we do have the money in our promotional fund to, to do it, if we didn't have the funds, it'd be a, be another story.
Jamie, what did, we had that marketing group that was here that tracked cellphone travels?
Yes.
How many people did they say were, were around the Riverside Center on that day? Like thirty-five hundred or something?
Yeah.
Throughout the day, there, I think there were...
Around three thousand.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
So, I guess that's my reasoning for the twenty-five hundred dollar recommendation.
Is that like an official motion?
Yeah.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion, motion is second for twenty-five hundred dollars, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All, same side, okay. I'm sure the Chamber thanks you. Jamie, you have, uh, some events to talk about?
If you guys want to go first.
Victor, if you want to introduce yourself?
Uh, you know, I'm actually here to introduce my son.
Okay.
Uh, I'm, I'm Victor Canales, I think everybody here, um, this is Specialist Carson Canales, he is the social media director for Canales Agency Unlimited, and he's going to be speaking for his brother who has just been deployed this week, who is actually in charge of the project, but he's coming back hopefully in a week or two. Hopefully.
Welcome.
Yeah, well, um, I come to present, as well as ask for formal permission, and hopefully support in publicizing the Festival de Hispanios, or the Festival of Hispanic, who are hoping to hopefully host it here September 21st at the, where's the last one? The Madison Plaza, from 3:00 PM to 9:00 PM. We will be offering, um, as a family-oriented event, anybody and everybody is welcome. An opportunity for people to experience Hispanic culture, in forms of Hispanic authentic food, Hispanic music, from a few different live bands, a Hispanic traditional dance demonstration, as well as a art garden from a few local, as well as, um, nationally renowned Hispanic artists, I believe Alex and Ray Mendez.
Remind them of them.
Yep. Heard their name a couple times.
Uh-huh.
Great, um, I think it's been a long time coming, to be honest, uh, that's, that's great. Have you guys worked with Jamie on the applications and all that stuff?
The applications have been filled out, uh, we are waiting on the insurance quote. Uh, one thing he failed to mention, that kind of thrown a wrench into it, is the, we have a lowrider display coming.
Okay.
Uh, so that's, yeah, it started off with three to four, and now it's up to six to ten, and now that the word's getting out, it may be more, so...
Lowrider.
What we're asking to do is close down First Street, but, once we get a final number, we may have to close down something else, we're hoping we'll know a little bit better closer to time.
Okay.
Lowrider bikes?
Lowrider, uh, cars.
Cars.
It's gotta be a little Hispanic, you know?
The sixty-four Impala, the sixty-four Impala was the, the original lowrider.
And what he, what Carson said is absolutely correct, we're working to do it so that, um, we have things for the kids at the beginning, uh, traditional mariachi band, the folklore dancing, we want to try and bring all of that in, and try and, uh, make this a very cultural event. It's obviously gonna be a lot of fun, it's gonna be a, a great thing, we think, for the community, and we have a lot of Hispanics in this community who have done great things that we're gonna also try and highlight, and we're trying to figure out how we can get ahold of a few more of them, kind of tell their stories, and tell the stories of how the Hispanics came to Adams County, how they came to Decatur, um, you know, one of the things that we talked about was, was how the Bakers and Schultz's and the Mendez's and all of them started to get to know each other and integrate, you know, in the community, so that's something we want to try and highlight as well.
Cool, that's great.
And of course, with two military sons we have, we want to make sure that we highlight the military aspect of it as well.
Terrific, how will you advertise?
You're right.
Well, you said it best, um, through social media means, right now we currently have an Instagram page, we're also working to a Facebook page, and I believe we're also beginning to begin discussions and notions to continue it even further into any social platforms such as Snapchat, and even talks of doing TikTok, that we'll be able to do things such as maybe have clips, highlight reels of maybe the lowrider group that is thinking of coming, see a traditional band, and maybe even Fox groups such as, like, little clips snippets of our traditional dance.
Cool.
Awesome, very cool. What's the Instagram page?
Um, it has, apologies, I'll pull it out. It has a lot of underscores, Instagram's technicality, you can't have spaces in your name.
And we had to look up how to spell some stuff, because we're not really as Mexican as we are. We're gonna have to bring in some interpreters, there's gonna be some issues.
Uh, the official name for it is the Festival underscore D underscore Hispanios underscore Decatur.
Okay.
Easy, very easy to find.
So, V is D E, D E, and then Hispanios is H I S P A N O S?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
There's no accent marks anything, because looking that up would be a nightmare, frankly.
And we're going to officially launch those pages on Monday, we're going to share it amongst our family and our friends, so we should see that start to blossom very well. As you know, most of you know, we have a very large family, a friend network in this, in the community, so we think that'll help a lot.
Okay, I think it's great, great.
I'm excited about it.
Yeah, cool idea.
We're definitely gonna have taco, and, uh, we actually have a, remind the Cuban, Melon's Wayland, food truck coming as well, and Cuban, the Cuban thing, they have, they have desserts as well, so...
This is a question, but more of a joke, not really for the media, is there somebody designated in charge of nutty for the day?
Well, well, probably, but normally put in charge of that would be my mom, and that's half the walk, well, so now we got about two or three people to kind of pull it over.
Okay, all right.
We might, we might see if we can get him before...
Everyone has a job.
What's the date again, sorry?
September 21st.
All right, this is great.
This is great, so, we don't, do we need a motion?
To accept the event, right?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to accept that.
Has, has the application went to department management yet, or?
I do have the application here, uh, earlier today, and one thing to add, because it's being a free public event, and they want to know if this could be delayed.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think that's what we're normally do on free, free public events.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so what, what about if, if this lowrider group gets bigger, um, do you think you'll need more than First Street, or?
How many do you anticipate right now?
Right now, we started off, um, Angie Soto from Fort Wayne Lowrider Group, uh, told me the first thing, say, hey, we have three or four that already said, yeah, we'd much rather come there than drive further away, because Fort Wayne's Decatur, I'm sorry, twenty minutes. But then they started talking about it, and in their group now, six to ten now are, are wanting to come, and as that grows, anyone runs events knows that once people start to, hey, I'm gonna go, why don't you come too? So we're, we're hoping, um, we're hoping to have a better feel for the number in August.
Okay.
Uh, but I, we wanted to be ahead of schedule, just saying, we definitely know we're gonna be at First Street.
Yep, I appreciate that, and why don't you just get back with us, like, maybe in August, and give us a better number, and then we can decide on street closings and things like that? All right, well, thank you guys.
Yeah, thank you.
I made a motion to...
I made a motion to accept the...
I'll second.
Motion is second to accept this event, all in favor?
Aye.
All, same side.
I was supposed to be on vacation, so I turned around twenty-four seconds, changed it.
I'm in.
All right, and then I have a couple other event applications. The Memorial Day Parade, which is Monday, May 27th, is coming Monday, and that is from the American Legion. They are asking for Jackson Street to be closed by the bridge, that's starting at ten o'clock, their event actually starts at ten fifteen, and then the parade route is the Jackson Street Bridge, at about ten forty-five, they would leave and go west on Jackson Street to head to Second Street. On Second Street, they'll go south and head to Court Street, and then they'll get to the Peace Monument, and they do have everything signed, police and fire, and they have, police and fire are normally there to help with the traffic flow, and then to also close Third Street between Court Street and Madison during the time of the Peace Monument.
Okay.
Make a motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All, same side. Jamie, will you share if they have something on social media? I re, I remember last year on social media, there were people...
I remember.
Saying some pretty nasty things that they weren't told about this, so somehow...
Yes, I can share something.
So, um, you know, if, if the organizers don't have a social media presence, then there's nothing we can do, but it's not our event.
And I think this is the same event last year, that is way ahead of schedule, and by the time people showed up at the Peace Monument, it was over. So there were some people upset. Again, social media is your friend.
We can share, but only if someone has a, if someone has a post.
Right, great, I'll look.
Okay. What else?
And then we have Vama High School 2004 reunion, um, August 3rd on the Plaza, that's from five to ten, they'll set up around noon, they're expecting around a hundred people, two poor guys will do their bar services, they've already got their parents turned in, there's no street closures, and they have all the signatures and everything for that application.
Make a motion to approve?
I'll second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
All, same side.
Okay, and then we have Free Family Yoga on the Plaza, and this is Saturday, June 8th, Saturday, July 13th, and Saturday, August 24th. So it's from nine to ten, was set up eight-thirty, ending by ten-thirty, um, expecting around thirty to fifty people, and it's Decatur Down Dog Yoga with Jenny, and they're not using the bathroom, electricity, or any sound, um, so requesting that this would be waived for that.
Make a motion to accept.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
All, same side.
From August 24th.
All show up with your loved ones, there will be more than fifty people there, so...
I think that'd be a good event for our, our media.
Yeah.
Yoga on the Plaza.
So, family-friendly, beginner-friendly.
Look at Joe, Joe, I wanna see, I wanna see some of those stretches.
Come on, Joe.
And then the last thing I have, isn't an event application, but Decatur Sculpture Drawer is coming up on June 8th, and there's a banner on the back of City Hall, fully faded, um, it's been there for quite a while, so they are getting a new one made and wanting to replace that one. They just wanted to make you guys aware, I don't think...
Think we've had any issues with it, it was falling down.
Sounds like, and exactly, but here's a picture of it, it's the same one, yeah, it's just really faded.
I make a motion to allow them to do that again.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Same side.
Go like that.
That's all the events, all right.
It's gonna be a busy summer.
Busy season, yeah. June 8th, July 13th, August 24th, nine AM.
All right, what were those dates again? June 8th?
July 13th.
July 13th, August 24th.
Nine AM. Nine AM on the Plaza. Bring your tights.
They're all tight.
Nine AM. Nine AM, kind of nine AM.
All right.
Nine on the dot. Eight fifty-five for you, Jeff.
Next I have, um, Jenny had come in to talk to me last week, and wanted to have some discussion over a possible city seal and city flag.
Um, so, yeah, like, a couple, uh, weeks, months ago, I brought up, I felt the need for us to have a city seal, a city flag, just to really represent our community, um, used for marketing, promotion, things like that, um, we know historically even that flags and seals also kind of show the history of whatever entity it's representing, and so, um, I just really want to move this forward and make something happen, and so I'm asking, um, for permission to form a committee to just start looking into this, um, asking, identifying people in the, in the community that could contribute, um, knowledge, skills, artistic side, everything like that, um, of just moving this forward. Now, obviously, you know, nothing is going to be set and, and, you know, accepted without council's permission and everything, but I just want to start to get the ball rolling officially, um, yeah.
Um, I guess the one thing that I added when, is that, I guess it makes sense to me to be like in a couple phases, like the first phase, getting ideas, not necessarily letting drawings come in right away, but maybe there's some people out there that have some ideas on our, on our history, uh, on things that should be in it, so maybe the first phase is to figure out what all things should be included in, in the seal, and then go into the design phase after that, I mean, it seems like that makes sense to me.
Yeah.
In an effort to get the word out and for people to...
Right.
...weigh in on it.
Right.
Sounds good.
I would ask maybe even that another council member maybe join in with this with me, if you'd like, um, and then...
Even?
Yeah. Yep.
That seems, seems right up your alley, Scott.
That's right up.
Good.
I don't know about that, but I'll help.
Any more, any more discussion?
Question.
So I guess you was asking for...
And you can have two, have two council members be a part of it, but if you have three, then we're talking quorum, so, yeah.
Two.
Two is good. And then, yeah, like, identifying people within the community, like, we all know that there's some historians here in town that can offer some insight, um, and that, I think, establish the committee first, and then decide, you know, how to go forward from there with accepting ideas and things like that. And I would love to even see, like, I think final acceptance and approval absolutely needs to come through us, but maybe some kind of, like, voting within the entire community, like, hey, here's three flag options, which ones do you all? So that people can feel like they're contributing and a part of the process, yeah. So, yeah, I'm just asking for permission right now to formulate a committee.
I make a motion to give them permission to form, go with it.
Second. Motion is second, any more discussion?
Just, um, in consideration of involving maybe someone from the youth council as well?
I think that'd be a great idea.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just a suggestion.
And obviously, along the process, you know, I'll, just, all of you regularly giving you updates to how things are going, so...
That'd be great, that'd be great. All right, motion is second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All, same side, okay.
Did you get the first flag?
Do I?
Yeah.
Okay, next we have Kurt with an update on the skate park.
So if you look up here, this is the final drawing, the skate park, um, starting tomorrow, TD Concrete will be at the skate park, uh, and they're gonna start building some of this stuff, and it would be a little bit cheaper if we could build some of this stuff out of concrete versus wood, uh, so there's a pyramid up here in the upper left-hand corner, uh, there's a shelf, uh, about thirty inches wide, about twelve inches tall, uh, there's an actual curb, like what you would, the parking curb that they request, uh, then this thing here in the middle is kind of weird, it's kind of a ramp coming up on a flat platform, there's two side walls, and then some steps, that's what these kids have been asked for. Down here we have, uh, a ramp system, that's about eight foot long, four foot wide, starts at nothing, goes up to about two foot tall, and then there's a two-foot gap, and then it goes just the opposite. Uh, down here there's a...
I'd find that gap.
About six inch tall pad, and about a twelve inch wall at the back.
I have to go.
Those were the rides.
I've got some old roller blades, I'm thinking.
Then, uh, we have, uh, what's called a line, which I've got pictures of, right here, and we've got, uh...
They're like a hammer pipe.
Two quarter pipes.
Yeah.
The right, and one from the lower left, and then we have what's called a mini ramp, and I have a picture of that also, um, that's basically big around, it's six twenty-two foot long, and it just does this number right for it. Uh, we are purchasing those items, um, and then we have two eight-foot rails, one up here to the top and one to the bottom, Universal Metal Craft has appropriated those for us, and they're, they're currently being powder coated in the seat.
Cool.
Great, so, this, this all started last summer, um, with some kids skating on things downtown they shouldn't be skating on, um, Kurt and I began meeting with them, and meeting every two weeks, um, and they were very excited about helping design something that they could use, I think it'll help them take pride in it and protect it. So, pretty excited for us to get started.
There are a lot of skateboarders both by my house, and they're gonna surprise.
Yeah.
One, one of the skateboarders is Mr. Canales, who was just here.
Oh, really?
Seen him out several times.
Well, they need a place to go that is designated for that, 'cause I know even at Storybook Park, I hear him all the time, and, so, it'll help even conserve some of the other parks and stuff we have.
And one of the first things we asked them was, you know, is that place not suitable for what they want, would they rather be somewhere else so that they would use it? And right away they said, no, we love it down there, it's all trash, so...
So we have a estimate of what we're investing in this?
So...
Dollar-wise?
Last year you guys approved two hundred and forty thousand dollars of park improvements out of ARPA fund, and twenty-five thousand was set towards this, um, so far we've spent eleven thousand dollars, and we have another roughly ten coming in in concrete from Taylor, so I guess we have to pay a lot of that.
Yeah, we did, yeah.
So that's already paid for, so we, we've, we got about twenty into it already, so I guess the, like, the ask is for an additional ten thousand dollars in ARPA funds to cover, because the, the original ramps, you looked at with wood, and then these are, these are upgraded to a composite, a composite with a coating.
They got a product called Skate Light that he comes with, um, it, the first thing I had in mind was, is you're an Indiana, I'm like, yeah, and he says, we're gonna need to do something, if these aren't gonna be inside, you're gonna be... Which he had sent quotes, the, the first quote he had sent was with the Skate Light product on it, um, but he didn't say we would, there's certain areas of, of the, we would have to deal with some top water seal every year, um, help preserve certain areas of it, um, he had suggested going to treat the material, and that was gonna double what we were back on.
So, I agree with you, athletes, additional ten.
Additional ten, and that should, and that'll cover all the additions that have been added to it.
I think a lot of thought was put into it, um, it's definitely a park improvement, that was the whole goal, so, I make a motion to accept to move forward with the ten thousand dollar expenditure out of ARPA funds.
Second. Motion is second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All, same side. Okay, all right.
Hey Kurt, Kurt, is this gonna be open all the time then, or is there hours, or?
Well, it's all park hours, it's all park hours.
Yeah, that was one thing that was brought up on social media.
Or something like that, or?
Well, you know, I, I thought about that too, 'cause like, we went through this with the Holland Trail, right, we had to sign waivers, but part, all the parks, I mean, we, we...
The parks are all charged.
Right, what are we doing, anything special for this, or, I mean, you have slides and merry-go-rounds and stuff?
I'm just curious, I didn't know what, like, the, do you, do you know the skate park in Fort Wayne, is that just open, or?
I think it is just open.
It's just open, yeah.
Yeah, I was just curious, I don't know.
Right, right.
Yeah, that's fine, I'm just curious.
Okay. Um, next we have Jeremy, a report on roadway safety audit performed by Purdue LTAP.
Back in January, we discussed, um, some different federally options, some of those that are coming up, and, uh, we had some areas that we have helped, and probably ought to have some roadway safety audits done on. What roadway safety audit is, is certified engineer from Purdue LTAP. Comes in, looks at all of your information, looks at the crash ratings, um, your average daily traffic counts, and then visually visits the site to determine, you know, if there's something that we're just totally missing or not. Majority of these are normal maintenance items that we take care of either annually or by, you know, with pavement markings and such, other than intersection at twenty-eight and, and West Monroe Street, which has been a problematic intersection for, I don't think, for thirty years, probably, or more, so, just wanted to give you guys some information, you know, you can read it, kind of, and go through it, ask questions later on, you don't have to spend a bunch of time denying what you have. I just would like to have Kevin make this, or you guys make this, matter or matter, just in case, if we do have a serious accident, or that one's in a fashion going forward, that we're doing our due diligence to have this up looking at.
I'll make a motion to make this a matter of record.
I'll second.
Motion second to make this a matter of record, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign. Okay. All right, next we have a resolution for additional appropriation, but we need to make a matter of record that it was published properly.
Yes, yes.
Motion second, on the publication, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign. Okay.
Okay, so this is Resolution 2024-4, it's an additional appropriation for the heating and cooling system at the, when we had the transaction with the county, and they purchased some ground off of us. That was known past budget time last year, so we knew going in we weren't gonna be able to budget that $200,000 to put towards the heating and cooling, so that's what this is for, is basically taking the $200,000 that we received from the county and putting it into our budget for this year, so it can be used to pay the dealing group for those repairs. So technically, not really any extra money, it's just taking the money out of West County.
Is there any discussion, or just no?
And I came up, motion, the previous resolution. I move to introduce Resolution 2024-4 by short title only.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign.
Resolution 2024-4, additional appropriation. I move to adopt Resolution 2024-4.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign. Okay. We have a final reading of Ordinance 2024-6 regarding a handicap parking space on Sixth Street.
I move to place Ordinance 2024-6 on its third reading by short title only.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign.
Ordinance 2024-6, an ordinance with the common council of the city of Decatur, which amends Chapter 78, Schedule 3 of the Decatur Code of Ordinances of 2015, is supplemented regarding handicap parking spaces. I move to adopt Ordinance 2024-6 on its final reading.
Motion second, roll call vote. Jenny Voschel?
Yes.
Matt Baer?
Yeah.
Tyler Fullen-Temp?
Yeah.
Scott Murray?
Yeah.
Abby Wong?
Yep.
Okay, well, that's... Kurt, did you have something else? Kurt, did you have something else? Oh, that's right. You wanna explain to everybody?
So, over the last couple of weeks, both Dan and myself have been approached by different people interested in the property, but we can't get down on the business of the property. I highlighted it directly on the other tracks, on the police department, and parking there. Both individuals and expressed interest, he was, you know, involved, and they're bringing us to, um, I told him, you know, about the city, basically this will be a council decision as to whether or not we sell that property, and we'll do homework.
Not a lot, Kurt, in the 40 minutes, I knew about it, but, um...
And this is something you guys can sit on and take a look at it and see what you think. But it's basically on Eighth Street, behind the police station, it runs from Jefferson a little bit past Madison, but someone had mentioned it a couple of years ago, but I know there's some right away from the railroad track, there's some right away from AEP. I'm not sure Kurt knows a little more about what's actually buildable, it's been just a grass lot for, well, forever.
What, they think it could fit single-family homes, what are they...
Well, the one, the one expressed putting B plus in Brandon, she says, each of the five B plus is commonly on that lot, the other expressed single-family, trying to feed them what Colton Vickel's working with right now.
We absolutely need housing, and we need it in what the price range likely would be in that vicinity. I don't know, are these builders under any time constraints?
Well, I, if we were going to sell that property, I would strongly suggest that with the sale of the property, you put a time constraint on there, and start construction at a certain amount of time, otherwise they'll sit on it, you know, somebody possibly will sit on it for...
Years.
Years, you know, before they did it. I have heard if one property is to have more collateral, you can just put it on other assets.
Would it be prudent to have the property appraised?
I think we'd have to.
First step, to even know what we have?
The property, so, one of the things...
Kind of like industrial park, too.
Kurt had talked with me late this afternoon, and, and so would, kinda wanna double check, but generally, for the city to be able to dispose of property that they own, or that we own, you first have to get an appraisal, or two appraisals, and then that would be our, kind of minimum, the average price of those two appraisals would be like our floor in the amount that would be, we would be permitted to sell it. Then there would need to be a resolution that the city is electing to dispose of that property, and then there would need to be a decision made as to whether it's at auction or whether we go through the bid process, and then, once those bids or that auction is complete, then you can complete the sale, but you, again, your floor would be the average price of the two appraisals. If, if it...
Especially with expressed interest from developers, I would make a motion to move forward with getting the area appraised, so we know what we have, that's, that's the logical first step.
Let me, because there is a caveat, if the, if the value of the land is below a threshold amount, and that's, that's what I'm not, off the top of my head confident about, I'm not sure that the appraisal is required, or that that step, so I, that's what I really would like to check into, but generally speaking, appraisal should be the first step.
From between now and the next couple of weeks?
Sure.
That's something you could explore.
Yes, absolutely.
And I'd like to hold back then, and let them explore that, and come to us next meeting with some recommendation on how the city could proceed, and that, but to me, it's exciting that you have developers showing, expressing some interest in that area.
Do we have any other plans for that area? Like, has anything ever come up, I mean, hey, what about this?
The barrier is the train track.
Yeah.
Shoulda, woulda, coulda built a bigger police station, built a bigger fire station, but...
I think I've heard many people discuss maybe like a playground, or a dog park, or things, things like that, that could go there, but, I mean, it's been sitting there for...
We had discussed that as a possible location for the dog park, and the people in these seats chose where it is as a better place for it.
I like the idea of development of more housing and of existing property right within our city limits, like, that's a great central location. You know, we've grown lake shore, golf course, growing outward, filling some of the spaces that we have.
Although, I mean, that location would be very walkable to downtown, for sure.
Yeah.
Okay, so you're gonna look into a little more?
For sure.
All right, great. Thanks Kurt for bringing that up.
Yeah, I was just gonna bring up, budget time is here again, so I'll be sending out forms to department heads that I haven't already, to start going through those budgets, to start working through those. I believe Dan and myself would like to meet with everybody, at least wants to go through it, wanting to help me understand a little more, and so we're all on the same page. And then a thing for council to think about is raises for next year, too, so that's usually what we start the budget with, is the payroll, so that's a big ticket item, so you guys can start thinking about what you're interested in doing here, that way I can start plugging it in and seeing where we're at. And last year, I think it was, was it 3% last year, I believe?
I think.
The year before was a dollar amount, I believe.
Crazy, it's already here again.
Yeah.
Wow. Okay. Department heads, Jeremy?
How's it tonight?
Here. Kurt?
Good.
Josh?
Uh, our center's around, we should have a poll on that, made up by mid-June, and area space in general, we rebuilt three of them.
Nice, nice. Mid-June, huh? We'll have some data? All right. Jamie? Okay. And you guys, anything from council?
Just, do we know anything on the bid process with Colton Vickel and the former parole building?
I don't know.
We would be the ones sending out the bids.
Right, but wasn't, wasn't their architect coming up with the, like, bid specs?
Yeah, last I heard, they were working on the bid specs.
Yeah, I don't think we've had the bid specs back yet.
Yeah.
I think that's what we're...
So that would run through, that'll run through the city, that'll run through Board of Works?
Okay. Good question, though, yes.
Keep getting asked.
Right, right, right. Anybody else in council? Anything from the public?
I do actually have a question.
Okay.
Um, the list is Jeremy G., the intersection, does that happen to include the intersection out front of Belmont, uh, 224 regarding Jackson there? Okay, okay. I would like to frame that series of attention, and according to Tori's brother with school in the morning, is going from Jackson to the school, if there's a car in front of me turning left, and I go around, there's a lot of cars that turn left in front of me, and actually, I think last Thursday, I had one turn in front of me, and I laid on my horn at her, she didn't even look at me, and there was actually a Decatur police officer right there, that far, I saw the whole thing, but didn't do anything, I don't know, you know, maybe he chose not to, I'm not gonna be mad or anything about it, but I'm kind of surprised that he didn't, you know, go after her, because she did pull up in front of me, I had to play my brakes, scared my son. Um, Tori, I know has sent me a lot of texts, uh, when that happened in the morning, but she's taken her brother to school for me, she tells me almost every time somebody turns in front of her. Same thing if my husband goes, he rarely takes me given up from school, but if he's going down Jackson, he goes through that intersection, almost every time somebody turns in front of him there.
When you get out into the intersection, that would be actually a...
Right.
Because of 224.
Kind of surprised they didn't put a turn lane in there, when they redid all that.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, I mean, Jackson there, that can just be widened a little bit, show two lanes, so it's more visible, because when that first car pulls forward to wait for the oncoming traffic to go and make that left turn to go out of town, there's plenty of room for the behind traffic to cross, and I, and I know a lot of that traffic on this side knows that.
Right, right.
But they turn anyways, I mean, there, I, I know somebody who turned in front of me, and I laid on the horn at her, and I said something to him, he's like, well, I have the time, I said, no, he didn't, because I was right there.
Right, right.
So...
I don't know, Jeremy, would that be anything with, Jeremy and I would end up today for a four-hour meeting about safety and about some extra funding that's for projects, kinda like that, maybe? I don't know if that's something, would they look at it, or how does that work?
Um, yeah, Dana probably would.
Just bring it to their attention, see what they think could be done?
I can say something to Dana, but, um...
Dana's within dot, yeah, he's their engineer.
If, if you all like the map, I think it would.
It seemed like, cause a lot of things they talked about were like, lane changes and different things like that, to make, cause some of them were, they gave some examples of ones they've done, that was moving a left turn lane over or something, so things were more visual.
Right.
Um, stuff like that.
Yeah, I think if, if, you know, if you were gonna observe it, definitely do a poll back in session during that, at 3:00, yeah, and then from 3:00 to 3:30 timeframe, that's...
Yeah, we could bring that to Dana's attention, I mean, there is, you know, there's hundreds of cars there every day, and it could...
Yeah, all fun and some mindsets, look through, too.
Right. Okay, thank you for that. Mr. Drucker, we did, we did approve a sign on your street, so, and the board works. Okay, anything else that you have?
Good job.
All right, all right. Anyone else?
Motion to pay the claim.
I'll second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign.
And a motion to adjourn.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign.